Tuesday, November the 6th, 2018, 3 o'clock. We'll have the call to order and the invocation by Councilmember Jeff Darby, Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Thomas Harvey. And if you would, real quick, just silence your cellphones.
That's right. Holy Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you, Lord God, for this is the day that you have made. We will be glad and rejoice in it. We pray for those who are running for election. We ask, Lord God, that they have a servant heart. And Father God, you give victory to those who desire to serve this country. Their people. Father, we pray for every person on this council. We ask you, Lord, to continue to direct us and lead us in the way that we should go. Father, bless those who are sick among us. We ask that you give them comfort and healing. And bless this America. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Free, Mr. Darby, I'm sorry.
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All present?
All present. All right, approve the minutes of the October 16th, 2018 regular meeting and dispense with the reading.
So move.
Second.
Or first by Councilman Williams and second by Councilman Darby. All in favor? All right, need to approve the agenda as written.
Motion?
To move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams and second by Councilman Harvey. Please cast your vote. All right, we have ceremonial matters, recognition of guests. Today we have Stacy Brown, our President of the Shreveport Bossier Tours Commission.
Good afternoon, President Free, Mayor, Council. I appreciate you allowing me to come before you today to give you a brief update on tourism. I placed a copy of the draft of the budget. I don't have the formally printed one in yet, but you will be receiving a nice copy of that as well as our destination plan as soon as that's printed. Your appointee, Ashley Davis, could not be with us today and she wanted me to express her apologies for not being able to be with us. She's definitely been an asset on our board and we appreciate her participation. I'm going to show you just a brief PowerPoint. And I know you've got a lot on your agenda, so I'm going to skip through a couple of things and just move a little quickly here. Just giving you a little overview of some of the things that we have done in tourism. I'm going to skip that video because I know you've got a lot on your agenda. One of the things this year, we were named as one of the top certified destinations, one of eight in Louisiana, Shreveport Bossier was. And here we are featured in Where to Retire. Shreveport Bossier was also, the Convention and Tourism Bureau was honored with the Convention South Reader's Choice Award for the fourth time for the service that we provide to conventions coming to our area. And House Method named Shreveport as one of the most underrated, or as the most underrated town in Louisiana. What's really important is when you see the article here, it underlines when people say Shreveport, they mean Shreveport Bossier and the whole community. So if you read the article, it goes into how Shreveport has several things to offer and then it goes into Shreveport Bossier. And one of the key things they talk about is Horseshoe Casino, Mahaffey Farms, and other things. So they talk about the region, but they, a lot of times, will name it as Shreveport, but they're actually talking about the whole community. The economic impact of tourism is trending up. We are up in visitor spending, in earnings, that's employment as well. And we're also up in state taxes and local taxes from tourism. International visitor's spending continues to increase. What we're seeing is a nice trend. Canadians have always been one of our best, or our best markets. Mexico is often up there, but we're even seeing some little islands like Trinidad and Tobago appearing in our top 10 markets. Some of our main ones, China is also trending up more, along with Australia, United Kingdom, Germany, those are all mainstays for us as well. But we've seen an 11% growth over last year in our international spending. And that's actually strictly what they spend on their Visa card when they're in market in Shreveport Bossier. So we know that's actual spend. So if they're just spending that on their Visa, imagine what they're spending in their cash that they've already exchanged, as well as their other cards. Just a little bit about, we're excited about tourism. It is on the uptick. Leisure visitation, meetings, and sports have all shown steady growth this year. But we still have challenges, struggling downtown attractions, increased need for product development, a lack of a regional brand to really catapult us into the national and regional spotlights. And that's one of the things we're committed to working on over the next couple of years. One of the things we did this year was sit down with our staff and our board and do some retreat and talk about where are we going for the future and how do we get there. One of the main things they identified was being a catalyst for product development and destination management. So to really move our area forward, one of the things we knew is to take stock and assessment of what we're doing now. So we're about to launch, actually this week, a survey. And you will be receiving that, as well as a number of other community leaders, some industry professionals, so meeting planners that have brought meetings to Shreveport Bossier, tour operators, also economic development, sports rights holders will also be receiving that survey. So we learn more about not only what we're doing well, but what those needs are. What are we lacking in our community that we can go for in the future? Sometimes it's happy, sometimes it's not. There we go. Some of our public relations highlights. So year-to-date, we've had $2.7 million in public relations value with over 17,500 media mentions in group, leisure, and convention publications. Oops, went too fast there. So one of our summer marketing campaigns, this is a campaign we just wrapped up in August. This was a campaign, it's a multimedia campaign, and it drives people specifically to our website and to booking engines, so we can track exactly what they're doing. So as long as they went online and then they continue to book online, we have a tracking of their rooms and how much they spent in our community. So they booked 35,047 room nights at an average rate of $96 for $3,514,248 in hotel revenues alone. We spent on our campaign $89,000. So our increase of up to 10% over our rooms from last year's similar campaign. So like I said, these are just the rooms they booked after looking at our website and then going straight to the booking engine. This does not include, hey, I decided I want to go to Shreveport Bossier, I'm a Hilton Honors member, I'm booking through Hilton. Or I picked up the phone and I called. So it doesn't include all of those. So that's a tremendous return on investment. Convention and tourism highlights, we have had 384 meetings on the books for January, December of 2018. For 53,518 room nights, that's a 28% increase over last year. With a little over 137,000 delegates, that's a 49% increase with a $15 million estimated economic impact in our meetings area. Of course, Miss USA and Miss Teen USA were one of our highlights. Also, we're seeing a pickup in the oil and gas industry. Some of the movie industry is coming back as well, cyber industry-related groups and other large conventions. In future books, booked meetings, we have over 39 meetings on the books with over 21,000 rooms. One thing in our area, a lot of our meetings book very short-term. So some of our meetings we have on the books are out to 2023, but some of them won't book next year until next year. Some new initiatives, last weekend, we hosted a family reunion workshop. Family reunions are getting more and more popular and we're talking sometimes 500, 600 family members coming in for a family reunion and they utilize hotel rooms. They use local vendors for oftentimes buying T-shirts and different awards that they give out during their family reunion. So we're encouraging those to happen here in Shreveport Bossier. Also refocusing more on the oil and gas industry with its uptick, ramping up more military reunions as well. And the FIT, which is for individual traveler market. Many of our international visitors come through what we call FIT. So they book through our travel agent over there and they work with a receptive operator here in the United States. So we're growing our receptive operators so that we can increase that market. And of course, sports. We had 98 booked sporting events in 2018 compared to 102 in 2017. However, we increased our room nights, 26,320 room nights compared to 24,000 in 2017. We also significantly increased our number of people attending the events by about 50,000. And we were 170% over our budget for sponsorship and ticket revenue. So we like to be over in revenue. One of the things we committed to with the sports is not just to go for that hotel tax, but to then say, you know, we're going to go to local businesses and we're going to ask them to be a part of this and make that money go further. We're also going to produce events that bring in some revenue, such as the balloon rally. And we've been very successful with that. And that allows us to bring in more events and help more events in the Shreveport Bossier area. So we had 18,000 in attendance at the balloon rally and over 2,100 volunteers assisted with events during the year. We also worked quite a bit more with our rural partners, looking to see what other assets we had in the rural areas that we could take advantage of in bringing various events. And also looking at the national and regional area, we booked the Kayak Bass Fishing Nationals that will be held here in 2019. You know, who knew kayak fishing would be so popular? So they'll bring probably over 1,000 people into our community to kayak bass fish. So we're always looking for new and different events and things that we can host in our community. So just again, wanted to tell you thank you for your partnership. Without you, we couldn't have done many of these events. And we're working to continue to develop our destination. So in your packet, you'll see our budget there. One of the key divisions of the Bureau is the Sports Commission. The sports budget that you see outlined there is actually for their, the business side of it. So that's their trade shows, their general marketing aspect, the things that they do, promotions to bring events. Then in the Sports Commission budget, that's what they use to actually bring in the events and that's where that tax goes directly into that account. You'll also see that they've set aside some money. One of the things the Board voted to do was set aside 35% of that tax income into a future events fund. So that's getting up there where we're able to look at some larger events that we could not previously have hosted in our community. I want to say a special thank you to Don Williams and I believe Clay, nope, nope, Clay is not here this morning, oh, this afternoon, for their participation on the Sports Commission Board. They do a tremendous job in helping us to bring events to the area and we appreciate their dedication.
Thanks, Stacy.
The Sports Department has worked, as you can see, very diligently on increasing those funds as the other departments have. We also have other regional partnerships through the Louisiana Holiday Trail of Lights and the Boomer Bus Byway. Overall, we are projecting to end the year up compared to what we budgeted in revenue and actually holding the line in our expenses will probably be a little under what we had budgeted in our expenses. One of the things we've also dedicated is that we want to set aside some funds as the Bureau for future special events such as the Miss USA. So at the end of this year, we will have accumulated those funds to set aside for that in the future. You can also see that we have budgeted revenues actually about where we expect to end this year, maybe up just a little bit. So we've been very conservative in our budgeting and we've budgeted a zero-based budget. Again, I appreciate you allowing me to come before you, President Free, Mayor Walker, and Council. And if I have, if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer those for you.
Appreciate you coming out today.
We do have, no, we're not into December yet, but December the 7th is our open house. You'll be getting an invitation, but you definitely want to make it in for that. We always have some, some great food and a great time to catch up on events.
Standing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, there are no committee reports today? Not even from Mark Hudson?
Not even from Mark Hudson today, sir.
All right, unfinished business.
Adopt an ordinance, adopting and enacting a unified, amended Unified Development Code for the Bossier City Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission and the City of Bossier City, Louisiana, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances, providing for a penalty for the violation thereof, providing for manner of amending such code and providing when such code and this ordinance shall become effective final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Harvey, second by Councilman Williams. Is there any questions from the audience on this matter? Any additional questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $47,000 from the Parkway Capital Projects Fund to be used for the citywide pavement marking improvements. Final reading?
So move.
Second.
First and a second. Any questions from the audience concerning this matter? Or questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to declare certain removable equipment owned by the City of Bossier City a surplus to the city's need to provide for salvage and disposal according to law. Final reading?
So move.
On the last item? Sir, you have a question on the last item? The last item?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
That was the pathway, Parkway pavement markings? Do you have a question on that?
The other one before that.
The Unified Development Code?
The one before that.
That was the first one, sir.
That was the first one. Sir?
Yes, sir. All right, we have a first on...
The disposal? Salvage and disposal, I have a first, but I don't have a second.
Correct, I need a second.
A second.
All right, first by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Darby. Any questions from the audience, audience on this item? Or additional questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to approve the closure and abandonment of a portion of Edward Street. Final reading?
So move.
Second.
First from Councilman Harvey, second from Councilman Williams. Any questions from the audience on item number four? Additional questions from the council? Yes, sir. It's like you have to approach the, you have to come up to the mics or give us your name and address.
My name is Sammy.
Sir, you have to come to the mic, sir.
And for the record, sir, we need your name and address.
My name is Sammy Moore. I'm at 2028 Jean Street. I'm right, I'm right around the corner from Scott Street.
Yes, sir.
I want to know what's going on and what the city council had decided to do. I had a house fire about two months ago and I want to know what's going on with it because I have cleared all the junk that was over there. And I want to know what's going on with the situation today.
All right, is that in conjunction with the item number four?
Sir?
Is that in conjunction with the closure and abandonment of a portion of Edward Street?
I know it sound like because Edward Street has nothing to do with me.
No, okay.
But I want to know what's going on because I wanted to be here to ask some questions.
We have, you have to get...
It doesn't say anything about Jean Street.
To address the council, you need to get on the agenda in advance. So we're just voting on, we're just talking about the items on this agenda.
They say they was going to do something today and I want to know what's going on today.
I understand.
I understand you because you are everything and you're on top of the world and you represent.
Wish I was.
I want to know what's going on. I want no surprises tomorrow.
Okay, sir. We are only talking about the items on this agenda because this agenda's been approved and publicized, okay?
I don't want it to be approved. I want to oppose to...
On this, this particular item?
Not that. I want to oppose to what's going on with my land.
The only thing we're talking about today is the abandonment of Edward Street.
I want to be abandoned to my land. That's what I'm here for.
I understand. You're going to need to get on the agenda...
Yes, sir.
The next agenda by talking to the city clerk...
Yes, sir.
And then you can approach the council on that specific agenda item, okay?
Well, it's supposed to be on the agenda today. I don't know.
What's happened is Property Standards has given him until December the 5th of 2018 to rebuild the property or...
I cleaned the property.
Well, it's not coming to the council. It's being handled by Property Standards so that there's no agenda item on the council. He has until December the 5th to meet the requirements that Mickey Frazier has laid out for him. And in the event that he doesn't, then that'll be handled by Property Standards and he can appeal that decision potentially.
Okay.
So he needs to go upstairs and talk to Property Standards.
Okay.
I got pictures, I cleaned the place.
Yes, sir.
I just want to know what's going on. I don't want surprises.
Okay. So can you go upstairs and talk to Property Standards?
Let me walk you up to Property Standards.
Yes, sir. Go upstairs and have a conversation with Property Standards.
Okay.
And then come back and see us if necessary. All right, we're on number, item number four under unfinished business. We have the first, the second. Any additional public comments or questions on this item? Or from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute an act of exchange with the Red River Waterway District. Final reading?
So move. Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Williams. Public comment on this agenda item or questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance revising and replacing Article II, collections and disposal of Chapter 94, solid waste of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances. Final reading?
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Darby. Public comment? Questions from the council? Okay. Anything to add, Gary?
Well, simply put at your stations, a mail-out brochure that we'll be sending to all the citizens through their water bill. And that outlines any changes in the program. Collection days are the same, monthly fees for the service are the same. There are some increases on heavy user items, but even limp piles actually revert back to 2014 rates. They go down just a little bit from what they are right now. So I just wanted to make sure you had that information in hand. If you have any questions about it, you can contact me and I'll be glad to answer them.
This has been mailed or is it being mailed?
It will go out, the last week of November is our plan through the first three weeks of December. The water bill cycle is a four-week cycle.
Got you.
So Gary, this is on the city website?
It hasn't made the...
If they lose this and they ask me questions, I can refer them to the website.
Yes, and it'll be at the water billing office when people pay their water bills if they're signing up for the service as new customers.
Perfect. Any other questions for Gary? Any other questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the LaSanne Sewer Lift Station Improvement Project for a total of $200,000 to come from the Sewer Capital Contingency Fund. Final reading?
So move.
Second.
First from Councilman Williams, second from Councilman Irwin. Any questions from the public on this agenda item? Questions from the council? Cast your vote. New business.
Witness opening of sealed bids for the bid number P-18-24, US 71 Turn Lane at Sunflower Drive.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate for this job is $220,000 and the budget is $300,000, being funded by the 2018 Riverboat Capital Projects. There's one addendum which revised the bid form and provided questions and answers. The first bid is from Best Yet Builders LLC. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $145,514.10. That's 145,514.0.10. The next bid is from Specialty Track Ho and Dozer Service, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $146,450.3. I asked you to approve the reading of these bids.
So move. Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Williams. Council, please cast your vote.
Councilman, is everybody's light not flashing anymore?
Mine's not.
Vote again.
I don't have votes for Mr. Williams, Mr. Montgomery, or Mr. Irwin. You want to try it again?
I was up there.
It's... Mr. Montgomery, I'll have you that time. I don't have Mr. Free, Mr. Darby, or Mr. Larkin.
Are we revoting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now have everybody. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P-18-23, the Sludge Transfer Pump at the Red River Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate and the budget is $212,000. There were two addendums. The first addendum changed specs, contract documents, made changes to the drawings, provided questions and answers, and had a list of attendees to the mandatory meeting. Addendum number two, changed contract documents, updated the Davis Bacon Act federal wage rates. The first bid is from Axis Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $196,000 even. The next bid is from Dixie Overland Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $206,801. That's 206,801.00. The next bid is from Poli Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $270,000 even. The next bid is from Yorwick Construction Company, Inc. They acknowledged... The next bid is from Yorwick Construction Company, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for two hundred ninety-nine thousand six hundred sixty-four dollars. Two nine nine six six four point zero zero. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
Same move. Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, and second by Councilman Williams. Council, please cast your vote.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number eighteen dash two five, East Bank District Parking Lots.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate for this job is seven hundred thousand and the budget is seven hundred and fifty thousand. There was one addendum that had changes to electrical plans, list of product, products, meetings, and plan specs, and provided questions and answers. The first bid is from Two R Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for eight hundred four thousand four thirty-four point two seven. Eight oh four four three four point two seven. The next bid is from Best Yet Builders LLC. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for six hundred ninety-two thousand two hundred eighteen dollars. Six nine two two one eight point zero zero. The next bid is from Boggs and Poole Contracting Group, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for five hundred ninety-five thousand four hundred dollars. Five nine five four zero zero point zero zero. The next bid is from Cochrane Construction Company E, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for seven hundred four thousand three hundred ten dollars and sixty cents. Seven oh four three one oh point six oh. The next bid is from Cody Phillips Construction Company LLC. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for six twenty-three three sixty point six nine. Six two three three six zero point six nine. The next bid is from Darren Bailey, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for five hundred fifty-three thousand three hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. Five five three three five seven point five four. The next bid is from David Lawler Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for five hundred fifty-six thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars. Five five six nine eight eight point zero zero. The next bid is from Fessler and Bowman, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for six hundred forty thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars. Six four zero nine two three point zero zero. The next bid is from Karma Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for six hundred thirty-one thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars and thirty-four cents. Six three one eight four six point three four. The next bid is from Eminem Builders, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for five hundred thirty-five thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars and nineteen cents. Five three five nine three five point one nine. The next bid is from RVP Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for five hundred sixty-six thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars. Five six six seven 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 point zero zero. And the last one is from Testament Construction Service LLC. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for five fifty-six two eighty-seven point fifty. Five five six two eight seven point five oh. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
Same move. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Harvey. Council, please cast your vote.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number eighteen dash two six, Century Link Arena Asphalt Paving Rehab.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate is six hundred thousand. The budget is a million from the two thousand seventeen L C D A bond issue. There's one addendum that provided questions and answers. The first bid is from Bowman Grading and Asphalt. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for five hundred eighty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-three cents. That's five eight three nine nine two point two three. The next bid is from Brad Drake Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for four hundred ninety thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars and two cents. Four nine oh seven six eight point oh two. The next bid is from Dale's Paving, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for four hundred seventy-four thousand four eighty-five sixteen. That's four seven four four eight five point one six. The next bid is from Eminem Builders, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for four hundred seventy-one thousand four hundred fifteen dollars and seventy-five cents. That's four seven one four one five point seven five. The next one is from Redstone Construction Group, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for six hundred twenty-four thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars and eighty-three cents. Six two four one six one point eight three. Uh, the next bid does not acknowledge the addendum, so therefore it's gonna be disqualified. And that was from T L Construction LLC.
Stacy, can you reread the Brad Drake Construction LLC? I, I wrote one number down and I think you said a different number and I just wanna verify which one is correct.
Yeah, I did too. Sixty-eight or eighty-six?
Exactly. That's what I have.
Should we the second one?
Okay, it's uh four hundred ninety thousand seven sixty-eight oh two. Four nine oh seven six eight point oh two.
Okay, thank you.
And the last bid is from Vance Brothers, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for six hundred thirty-one thousand three hundred twenty-seven dollars. That's six three one three two seven point zero zero. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
Same move. Second.
First and the second. Uh, Councilman.
Irwin.
Irwin. Second, Councilman Williams. Please cast your vote.
Stacy, thanks for reading like that. I liked that. Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement for repairs to the Boardwalk Lift Station at a cost of forty-five thousand dollars to come from the sewer capital contingency fund. First and final reading.
Same move. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Harvey. Is there any public comment? Any additional questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance amending the police department operations budget by appropriating a hundred and four thousand two hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty cents to compensate K nine handlers for overtime from the two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen general fund fund balance. First reading.
Same move.
Mrs. President cannot ask the council to continue this item to December tenth or eighteenth?
You wanna second it?
I'll second it.
Second it as well.
Is it?
Which, which one is this?
Number seven. No, I'm sorry, number six. So you have a first and a second, Montgomery and Larkin.
Montgomery and Larkin?
Do we, um?
And then Mr. Darby.
Mr. Darby, that's a motion, Mr. Darby, to continue it?
To the tenth or the eighteenth, whichever the council preference.
The tenth is an agenda meeting and the eighth, I think, and eighteenth is a regular meeting.
It is?
We have, our last regular meeting of the year is the eighteenth. The fourth is the, the fourth is a regular meeting and the eighteenth is a regular meeting.
So it's the uh third or the eighteenth?
Is it third?
Third is a regular meeting.
I think it's the fourth. It's, it's December the fourth is the regular meeting and December the eighteenth is the regular meeting. Those are the two regular meetings for twenty eighteen. The calendar that you have in front of you, Mr. Darby, is the twenty nineteen calendar. That's probably what you're looking at.
Okay, well, I'm looking at the eighteenth.
Uh, there was, there was a corrected one.
Okay, maybe that's, maybe that's it.
But the council meeting dates are December the fourth and December the eighteenth.
Will the fourth work for you?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I got some more information I wanna get, but.
Well, I'll uh withdraw my motion.
Okay.
And I'll second Mr. Darby's motion.
Is it for the fourth or the eighteenth?
I said the fourth.
We'll go with the fourth.
December fourth.
December fourth.
Everybody clear?
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery.
Yes, sir. Now we can move on.
Was that the fourth or the eighteenth, Councilman Montgomery?
You don't want me to repeat it again, I promise, cuz it won't be out here.
Yeah.
For you're gonna get that on the back of the head.
All right, so I have a motion by Council.
Mr. Darby.
Darby, and a second by Councilman Montgomery to table until December fourth.
Not table, continue.
Not table, continue.
Continue.
Those words are very important. We wanna continue and I second the continuance.
A table means you'll have to pick it back up at the same exact meeting.
Gotcha. All right. Is there any public comment on continuing this item? Any questions from the council on it? All right, please vote.
Mr. Montgomery, did yours? Okay, I got it, I got it, I got it.
Don't kill it.
This item will be continued.
That would need a, a, a persistent. Persistent claim to it, so.
Introduce an ordinance amending the fire department operations budget by appropriating thirteen thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents to compensate a K nine handler for overtime for the two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen general fund fund balance. First reading.
Make the motion and ask that the council continue this item as well to the fourth of December two thousand eighteen.
Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Montgomery. Public questions? Council, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached revised cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Bossier City and the Veterans Affairs. First reading.
Same move. Second. Second.
First by Councilman Harvey, second by Councilman Williams. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached revised cooperative endeavor agreement with the city of Bossier City and the United Way. First reading.
Same move. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Irwin. Public questions? Questions from the council? Continuing, please vote. Thank you.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached revised cooperative endeavor agreement with the city of Bossier City and the Commission for Women of Bossier City, Inc. First reading.
Same move. Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Harvey. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Can you do that again? And then Mr. Darby and Mr. Larkin. Thank you. Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached revised cooperative endeavor agreement with the city of Bossier City and keep Bossier beautiful. First reading.
Same move. Second.
First by Councilman Harvey, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached revised cooperative endeavor agreement with the city of Bossier City and the Coordinating and Development Corporation. First reading.
Same move.
That's second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Darby. And questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached revised cooperative endeavor agreement with the city of Bossier City and the Gingerbread House Bossier Cato Advocacy Center. First reading.
Same move.
Second. I wanna make a comment too on that.
Uh, any questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
On the um not-for-profit or non-governmental entities, on their um corporate endeavor agreement, it says they will provide an update each year. Do, do we get those or is that coming to your office, Mr. Mayor?
When it first started out, I think the, the ordinance was written that they would physically come for the council and then some point after that, it was that they would submit a written report. Uh, and uh, I don't think we're getting all on, quite frankly.
It's cause they got their money, huh?
Okay, so I'm going to suggest that because they are using taxpayer dollars and they need to follow through on their agreement. I think a couple of those had twice a year that they coming for us.
I believe it is a semi-annual requirement. We will follow up with all of Mr. Darby and remind him of that requirement. Work with Phyllis to get him scheduled to come before you all are submit a written report.
Okay, thanks.
All right, first from Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Darby. Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars to come from the Parkway Capital Projects Fund to supplement the already appropriated fifty-seven thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars with the total of all funds to be used to replace streetlight concrete footings located at I twenty in the Arthur Ray Teague Parkway. First reading.
Same move. Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Williams. Public comment? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance appropriating ninety-two thousand dollars from the land acquisition fund for the purchase of the Bossier City Police Firing Range Site from the Bossier Parish School Board and authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute any and all documents in conjunction with the reference transfer. First reading.
Same move. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Darby. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing and approving the engagement of Heard, McElroy, and Vestral LLC to provide professional services to audit the financial statements of the city of Bossier City, Century Link Arena Fund, Fireman's Pension and Relief Fund, and the Policeman's Pension and Relief Fund. First reading.
Same move. Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Williams. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police officer for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading.
Same move. Second.
First by Councilman Harvey, second by Councilman Darby. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution adopting the city of Bossier City's current investment policy. First and final reading.
Same move. Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? From, questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution adopting a questionnaire for the legislative auditor and the city's answer there too. First and final reading.
Same move. Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an information services systems specialist for the information services department. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Mr. Harvey? And Mr. Erwin? Mr. Erwin?
May?
Thank you. Approved reappointment of Greg Nichols as a representative for the M P C Board of Adjustments. Appointment effective June fifteenth, two thousand eighteen and expires June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
So move.
Second. Uh, the first by Councilman Williams and the second by Councilman Free. Any questions from the audience? Concerns or questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Free, did you vote? And Mr. Darby? Thank you. Approved report of change order number one for the reservoir fence replacement project for an increase of seventy-one thousand one thirty-one point twenty-one. Total cost of contract with change order four hundred eight thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-one cents.
So move.
First by Councilman Williams.
Second.
Second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
What is this for?
There's a detailed attachment to, to the.
Oh, I know what the fence is. I'm talking about the change order. Is that what you were answering?
It's a good one, David. You'll like this one.
Uh, Mr. Montgomery, the, the change order is for additional clearing around the reservoir, so we had planned about a forty-foot wide swath, uh, twenty-foot either side of the fence. We left some pretty significant trees and brush and things from, say, the reservoir, the dry side of the reservoir berm back. And after going out there and looking at it, you know, looking at some of these trees that are sixty, seventy feet tall and concerns over them falling down, things like that, uh, we recommended to the city to go ahead and proceed with getting those removed just to, you know, one, make it look a little better, but two, think it'll improve the longevity of the fence out there.
Did, did you send this email to Mark about, they didn't bid because they didn't see the berm there? I got some crazy email like that.
Didn't see the berm there.
Yeah, they had to add some more fencing to it. That's why I said that when I said that. Did you see it?
I don't know that I've.
It was, it was a crazy email.
I'm not, I'm not sure I'm, I'm familiar with that, but the lion's share of that change order is for additional clearing and it's not, these aren't small trees. You're talking massive, uh, trees down through there, so.
Yes, sir, they've been there a long time.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions for Ben? All right, counsel, cast your vote.
Approved parade permit fee waivers for the following veteran for Veterans Bike and Car Event, November third, two thousand eighteen, and the twelfth Annual Northwest Louisiana Trail Riders All Western Parade, November seventeenth, two thousand eighteen.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Darby and a second by Councilman Harvey. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Approved the proposed two thousand nineteen Bossier City council meeting schedule?
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Harvey, second by Councilman Darby. Did we already incorporate the changes? I think Tommy brought it.
Yes, sir, the, the changes are incorporated and then whenever we publish it to the website and when we put it in the office for people to look at and when we send them out, we'll make sure that we keep those highlighted, the changes from, the variations from our normal meeting schedule, have those highlighted and, and notated that those are actual changes.
All right, any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Address the executive order from the governor making Monday, November twelfth, two thousand eighteen, a designated holiday.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Darby. Questions or concern from the audience? Any questions from the council?
I'm not sure that I need to make the motion now, but I was going to make a motion that we approved the mayor's, uh, to approve the motion to allow the mayor to, uh, observe, the, the employees to observe the Veterans Day holiday on Monday, November twelfth, two thousand eighteen, following Governor Edwards' executive order dated October eleventh, two thousand eighteen. Don't know if I need to make that motion.
Mr. Williams, do you want your motion to say that?
Oh. If that's, if this is wrong, that's fine. Yes, sir.
Just additional information, gentlemen. Veteran Day is not one of the city prior approved holidays. For the state, it is a prior approved holiday, so that's one reason the governor decided to, to move it to Monday because it is an official holiday for the state. I hadn't done it in the past because, quite frankly, uh, I thought our salaries was kind of low and I just thought this was a way of demonstrating to many employees what a great job they did, but there is a technical difference between the city holidays and the state holidays.
All right. First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Darby. Questions from the audience on this agenda item? Any additional questions for the mayor?
Sam?
Yes, sir.
We have a regular M P C meeting scheduled for next Monday. Is there still a way we can hold that if, uh, the halls closed?
You gonna need marshals? Do you get marshals here?
We should need to be able to, to get in here and.
And they would need the other building for restrooms.
Uh, otherwise we just reschedule our meeting.
Is that a big problem to reschedule?
It happens, uh, on occasion. We don't have a quorum or something like that. We would, uh, this early in the process, I think we could, you, it's only, it's only three cases on the agendas. I don't think it'd be a big problem.
Much public, uh, interest in those three cases?
Uh, we will re-notify them.
Mayor? Your call.
I'm sorry.
It's your call.
Oh, uh, I think our employees.
No, I give it to the mayor. I can do that, can't I? What is your opinion, Mayor?
Like I say, uh, I see it as a way of just demonstrating, uh, to the employees that we appreciate the work they do. They don't get the highest salaries and, uh, I can understand if y'all don't agree, but that was my rationale in the past.
Yeah, I'm talking about on rescheduling the M P C.
Oh, I think we ought to reschedule.
Marshall, if you'll give me a gun and a badge, I'll come stand security. All right. All right, so any additional questions from the audience on Monday, November twelfth, two thousand eighteen, being a city holiday for veterans, so, uh, celebrating Veterans Day? Any questions from the council?
I, I might just suggest, sir, that at the state level, they do call it a holiday, but if you look to text or the message, it says the day of rest. I don't want to be in the confusion about it being a holiday, just.
No resting, okay.
Day of rest.
Okay. So any questions from the audience on the day of rest, Monday, November the twelfth? Please cast your vote.
Swing down date.
All right. One purpose, uh, on new business, number twenty-six public hearing, one purpose of the meeting was to conduct a public hearing to allow all interested persons to express their views with regard to the proposed issuance by the city of not exceeding eight million dollars of its taxable water revenue bonds, series two thousand and nineteen. The bonds at a rate not to exceed three percent annual for a term not to exceed twenty-two years from the date of issuance. This hearing is hea, being held in accordance with the previously published notice of intent to issue bonds. Now the floor is open from, for comments from the public. All right. Hearing no public comments from either pros or cons and that no one had presented to the city a petition signed by not less than five percent of the electors of the city voting at the last special election or general election, objecting to the issuance of the bonds and therefore pursuant to the act, an election was not necessary. Ms. McGraw, please note that in the record.
Yes, sir. Introduce an ordinance to enlarge the limits and boundaries of the city of Bossier City by annexing approximately eighty-two point zero two acres located in section thirty-three township nineteen north, range thirteen west, Bossier Parish, Louisiana. First reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Harvey, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote. All right, as a result of the day of rest, Monday, all agenda items for the November thirteenth agenda need to be in the city council office no later than noon on Friday, November the ninth, due to the day of rest and celebration of veterans' holiday. Any additional announcements? I get, Jimmy, I guess I must have slipped through or missed it, looked at the wrong, wrong agenda, but the CenturyLink Castle items, we declared surplus. I saw that, I mentioned it must have been two weeks ago now, the sports commission made it because the hearse, the mud, the bugs over there were looking for some, uh, glass where the, the rink over there. And I talked to Rebecca today and I guess she had talked with Mark a little bit about it, but it seems that they may want to purchase all those things. I just want to know, we can talk about it later. I just didn't want to screw up or something, uh, what we need to do to, you know, see if that can happen.
Well, now that we've declared a surplus, we just have to come up with a reasonable value for it. We will have to get some hockey guru to look at it and, and give us some reasonable value and then we can work out a, a, a sale to. I mean, the benefit, uh, if you noticed on the, uh, the, uh, ballot today, uh, is they have a, a provision that allows donations between public bodies, uh, futuristically. It might be a little different here because I don't think it's actually free board. It's actually the mud bug hockey team, so. We, we would still have to get a reasonable value, but I think, I think that would be our next step anyway, uh, is to get it valued and then, you know, we'd be more than happy to sell it to them and, and we just have to go through the process of finding the value.
Of course, you know that, I mean, I know you know what, but they're old because when we first had the mud bugs.
I'm not, I'm not in any way.
Oh, I know, I know.
Enamating it's going to be high.
Rebecca was just hoping that you could get that money and buy some, and she needs tables and some things like that where we, you know, but anyway.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, I don't think it's going to be a, a huge amount, but somebody can look at it and say it has value to other hockey teams and so it would be worth X, so. That's what we'll do.
Mayor?
Uh, just two comments. I want to thank, on behalf of the employees, I want to thank the council for approving this day of rest. And secondly, I just want to remind everybody that if you haven't voted already, please go vote. Thank you.
Councilman Darby?
I wanted, wanted to ask, are we still on track for that shared road west side to be open in this month?
This year.
Oh, this year, I guess.
Our city engineer can answer that question for us. Mark Hudson?
He just thought he was getting away with no me, no report.
Not a darn thing happened today.
Okay.
Was that the question?
Yeah, it's, I guess it's going to be delayed a little bit.
Oh, the same, Shannon, that's why they didn't pull.
Things aren't happening like, uh, I was told they were going to happen. I'll get you a better, a better answer, but.
Okay. Would you mind considering, during the school term, there's a lot of kids. So, once it's open, there may be a lot of cut through. So can we do something to slow the traffic, you know, like caution lights, maybe consider that? And I talked to you before about the posting of the, uh, big trucks. If they come in right there, um, I think Walgreen and Casios and Willis Nighting, that's one thing, but no greater distant than that. That seemed like that would work because there's nothing else commercial on down. But you don't have to answer now, I just, just a thought.
I'll get you answers on both of those.
Okay.
Mark, aren't they getting fined right now for?
Yes, sir.
And don't you think they'd want to not get fined, you know?
You would think that. Um, a month ago, the number was about thirty-one thousand. Almost a thousand a day, so I, you know, we're prob, they're probably at least at fifty thousand by now and. I don't, I don't.
I guess they wouldn't have been arrested today, huh?
I don't know.
For a holiday. Any other announcements from the council? All right, meaning adjourned, you guys have a.